We're returning to our open hearing on our budget here on the June 20th at now 6:00 PM for our open public hearing. And we will have our public testimony at this time and then go into our budget deliberations. And we explained the process earlier at our 1:30 time certain budget hearing, but basically we have about 10 days in which to get this approved. And it's also possible to approve it tonight if we have the concurrence of our board on things. I have just one member of the public at this time who wishes to speak. So if there are other members of the public who'd like to comment, please do get in your blue speaker card and we will call you. So at this time then, I'll go ahead and call our first public speaker. And that is Mr. Dave Timms. And I will note that at 1:30, we had staff presentations and have had several presentations from our staff to point to this point. So good evening, Mr. Timms.
Good evening, supervisors. My name is Dave Timms. I'm a resident of Simi Valley and have a hangar here at Camrio Airport. And I'm also the president of the Camrio Airport Hangar Owners Association. We have a member of 63. I'll be speaking on behalf of the membership of the association. And I'm opposing certain portions of this airport's budget. But I want to say just up front, the general belief of the airports that we're very happy with the management of the airport. We get good cooperation from the Department of Airports and the staff of the airport, both Todd McNamee and his staff. We're on opposite sides of the table here in looking at these budgets because we realize that as the budgets go up, the hangar rents are going to go up. If we can control the spending, we can control the hangar rents. I gave you a handout. We'll just go ahead and turn to page two. And note that the salaries and benefits are 54% of the budget for both airports, and that does not include depreciation. I happen to think that 54% is a pretty excessive number for just for two big airports when we have a lot of other major expenses. On page three, I have added a column next to the last, year over year, and I'm comparing the differences in last year's expenses and this year's budget. And the first item is the regular salaries. Year over year, they're showing 8.1% increase. I happen to think also that an 8.1% over salaries in this economy is unreasonable. I talked to the assistant city manager of Simi Valley this afternoon. I asked him what's going on with the compensation with the city employees in Simi Valley. And I'll quote to you. Every city employee has taken a 3% benefit reduction and others are negotiating further benefit reductions. So Simi Valley is adjusting to the times with a 3% reduction in benefits. Here we're showing 8%, 8.1% increase in just salaries. Looking down further, group insurance has gone up 10.3%. A 401K plan is up 4%. And going back up to retirement contributions, retirement contributions equals 27% above and beyond the salaries. So I don't know of any other, any location in the private sector that's getting a 27% retirement benefit paid for by the employer on top of your salary. Page four, membership dues. I don't know exactly what membership dues are, but they're up 25%. Educational allowance is $10,600. I don't know what it costs to send a student to UCLA, but it seems to me like that's about two students full-time. Educational allowance, $10,600. Page five, conference and seminars, up 39%. And then moving on to the last page. I included the consumer price index. There'd be a lot of talk about consumer price index, both the, both all items on the consumer price index and the all items less food and energy. You can see that all items less food and energy is a much flatter line, much more conservative. And it's not, it doesn't spike up and down adjusting to the price of a barrel of oil. In this economy, and state unemployment is 11.7%. Real estate prices are very much depressed, both residential and commercial. At both airports, operations are down. This is just not the time to be increased spending. I think we can make some adjustments in the budget for the Department of Airports. And then lastly, I guess we'll get our notice for rent increases within a few days after the budget's decided. And in California Civil Code, landlords are required to give 30 or 60 days' notice before change in rents. I don't know how that affects the county. I assume it, I would think it would be the same. So, but we'll be seeing probably within about 10 days of notice. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Timms. We also, as you may know, have a hearing on the fees for the airport that will be tomorrow at our Board of Supervisors meeting.
Yes.
And the questions you raised here regarding the salaries and other issues that you raised, I'd be glad to ask these of our airport director if he'd like to come forward and respond to your comments.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Supervisors. I'm Todd McNamee, your Director of Airports. If I could just quickly go through page by page as Mr. Timms did. Forty, excuse me, 54% salaries and benefits, that's when you take depreciation out. We are a service organization, so it's primarily, our staff is performing the services out through the airport. That number varies within 2% of the overall appropriations picture every year, but that's not an unusual number. When you put depreciation back in, it's around 35%. So it's about a third of what we do out there. What Mr. Timms has done, you know, we have our budget book and how we put things together. It's last year's adopted budget versus this year's. And that shows for the most part, our spending is going down. But what he's doing is taking the estimated actual for what we're hoping to spend in 10, 11. And so we still conservatively budget, but I'm confident that most of these numbers will be much less when we get to our estimated actuals at the end of 11, 12. So I don't see anything increasing. In fact, if you remember, we're looking at eliminating a position, one of the airport managers that's going to save us about $75,000 to help cover this compromise we've offered in our rents that costs us about $85,000. So really what he's done is he's looked at the estimated actual for this year versus our proposed budget for this coming year. And that does show increases, but when you look at last year's adopted to this year's adopted, for the most part, they're reductions. And we do, again, we budget conservatively. We hope to spend less, and nine times out of 10, we do.
And I would note-
We're not increasing salaries by 8%.
Right. It's not an 8% increase. And similar to Simi Valley, we have also had all our employees provide a 3% contribution to their retirement instead of-
Correct.
-the county putting that in for them. So it's the, we're, I'm not sure what Simi Valley has done, but that might have been a one-time thing. We've got ours continuing each year now.
And the other thing for education allowance, what we do is we ask members of staff who anticipates going back to school and using that as they're offered through their MOAs and MOUs. And so I think that represents probably five people that may take advantage of the educational incentive that the county offers next year. If they all use it, great, we budgeted for it. If they don't, then we'll save a little money there, too.
Thank you.
Yes, Supervisor Zaragoza?
I just want to show, Todd, remember, we had a preliminary fee study and also a budget study before the, you brought the budget over to the, we had it over at Camrio and then we went over to the Camrio Chamber. And that was probably 30 days before the fees were-
We started down this path in April.
In April, I remember that.
So I think we're meeting any 30-day notice, but I would leave that to County Council to advise me otherwise.
And then also, of course, tomorrow you're probably going to share with the compromise that was agreed by the-
Correct. And that was also offered to the Airport Authority as a compromise in June.
And the Advisory Committee accepted it, too, and approved it?
We reported back to the Advisory Commission. If you remember, the input from the tenants was such that they didn't think it was a good time to do any increases.
That's right.
And so the Commission did not approve any rate increases. They didn't offer an alternate motion. They just didn't do, they didn't take any action. And so we reported that to the Airport Authorities, which both Oxnard and Camrio did approve the compromise, which is a 5% increase. It's a half a cent per square foot per month.
Management.
For private hangars, it's about $6 on average. And for county hangars, it's about 1 and 1/2 cents, which is about a $13 a month.
And I think that's important for the public to understand.
And we'll go through that more thoroughly tomorrow, because I imagine we'll have more public comment.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. The board have any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. So as we're looking at it, these, this budget incorporates the compromise of the airport's department with their lessees. But what I was also going to point out is that a lot of times you do have adopted budgets where, as we talked about earlier in the afternoon, the departments actually don't reach as much as has been allocated. And we laud those departments very much for doing that by doing some cost-saving measures. Okay, well, if that then concludes our public comment portion of the agenda, I would imagine then that brings us to our opportunity to have any more questions of staff and then we can actually do deliberations on the budget. Okay, then I'll go to my directions. Okay. Okay, then, so I would like to bring your attention to Exhibit A, that the budget adjustments consisting of appropriations, revenues, permanent positions is summarized on the separate pages. Exhibit A hereby are, would be adopted for inclusion in the budget. And so we can do that both with the general fund, both deliberate, have straw votes as necessary, budget adjusted continuously during those deliberations. And then we also do it for the non-general funds. And the non-general funds, including the Airport Authority, require a four-fifths vote. And we also have the decision process of deliberating, having straw votes as necessary. And then any changes that we may want to incorporate, we'll make sure and file a written description of those adjustments that, other than the adjustments that we've already heard from our staff. And so we then have the ability to go ahead and adopt the adjustments and then close the public hearing and go to the budget itself. So at this point, is the, does the board have any positions regarding the general fund budget before us as presented by staff? And I would just like to compliment staff. There was a lot of work between the department heads and trying to make sure that we can keep our, actually our costs lower than they were last year. And last year's were lower than the year before. Some efforts were made to reduce the inter-agency fees, and that I think is a significant help to the departments by making it easier for them to get their services and not have to pay as high for them allows the taxpayers also to see a, less money for the services that government provides. So my appreciation to staff and also a more comprehensive budget book than we've ever had before that gets down to the program level so we can really dial down and see where all those funds are going to specific programs. I think that's very helpful. And so at this time, does the board have any comments regarding the adoption of the general fund?
Madam Chair, we have Exhibit A first.
Okay. So before the deliberations begin, we'll go ahead and adopt Exhibit A as I read the budget adjustments. So we have a motion on that. This is the appropriation revenues, permanent positions is summarized in Exhibit A. I see a motion from Supervisor Long and a second from Supervisor Zaragoza. If we could all please vote. Okay, so the Exhibit A is approved. And now regarding the second part, which is our general fund, we have as proposed by staff. I know that there were some requests to make sure that we can include the, I believe it was the eight social workers in the HSA's department as well as the adult protective services element. And that was to work as keeping the programs and working with the CEO's office to see that they're funded. And as I understand, the CEO's office will bring back to us as they proceed with how that funding will come to be.
Madam Chair, if I could, if I could try to word the motion this way to capture that and a few other things. One, that the motion would be that we not make any adjustments to the budget, to the general fund budget. I think then we have to do it for the non-general fund, but for the whole budget, that we not make any adjustments this evening and that we move forward with adopting the budget. At the same time, I think we heard about the rapid response program last week and that there is $90,000 in funding to continue working it forward for a while and that we direct HSA and the CEO's office to work and see what could be worked out without us having to make adjustments to the budget. And see if there's other grants that could become available, et cetera, as they move forward. So that would be, the motion I would make is a sense of the board. Then the two other areas that I think, that I don't think we should make any budget adjustments for this evening, but I know that the public defender talked about the, how much a social worker would improve the efficiency. And I would just have it be a sense that if the public defender finds grant funding for some significant part of this social worker or finds some way to do that, that that be reported back to the CEO's office and we try to see what we can do if something came forward. And the same thing with animal reg, if there is something that comes forward. But the one program that the board would be clearly saying we'd like to continue to make sure, see what we can do is the rapid response program that we have. So the motion would be no budget adjustments, rapid response program to move forward. Invitation to the public defender and the animal reg that if they find something out there, that it get reported back to us so that we can, at a later date, decide if we want to do anything with that.
So we could match those funds potentially or more, so-
Depending on where our budget situation looks like at that time. We just don't know what's going to happen with the state. So that would be my motion.
If you have a motion on the floor? One second. Supervisor Long?
I just want to make some comments in regards to what we've done with our fees, how we've worked. Since last time we were here, I spent some time with Mr. Powers' CEO's office and also some different agencies have chimed in on what they've done with our Fire Chief La Roper, RMA have done some tremendous job in explaining some of our fees. As we know, most of these fees are interchanged, but a lot of the fees that are hitting the public that we were concerned with, our fees that we kind of dictated, most of that through the Acela program was a big piece of what has, if you look at the Fire Chief, a lot of his programs or most of it all is Acela that's gone on and some of it. So we've been able to work through most of the fees and it looks like we're not hitting the public with very few of any. And I know Mr. Powers has said that he's going to look through whatever else he can do. And we're working that out now as trying to find any other opportunity to find some reduction or trying to find a way through this year, we're going to be able to, if we have to mitigate any of these, these kind of fees. So I was happy to see that a lot of that was, you know, we got to expect the agency, we dictated Acela, hopefully to improve the public's awareness and all the other efficiencies. So that's one of the reasons why those fees were, if you go down all the different pieces. So I appreciate all the hard work that was done. I appreciate the different agencies that opened that up and there was, you know, a couple of different. But the big thing is some of the different agencies who've gone to reduce their fees, who've worked so hard to the public that are going to see it, I mean, from, you know, the clerk recorder and all the different, I mean, even some of the ones at RMA, they've reduced some different fees to make it easier for some of the people. And that, that I appreciate because again, it's very difficult in this day and age right now to pay it at all. And if I have to pay an increase, it's even harder. So I do appreciate that opportunity. So we're doing what we can, but again, I did not want to balance the budget on the public, you know, of paying the fees. So it's worked out pretty well and I do appreciate, again, there is fees going up. Let's don't, we're not saying that, but a lot of it comes from what we've done at the board with some of the, you know, million dollar, multimillion dollar programs. So I can go along with what we're doing in this budget and I appreciate all the hard work to make this thing work and the compromise that, you know, Todd has worked out to try to work that. I know you have some certain things you wanted, but you're willing to work through this. And I know Mr. Timms wanted some other things, make it more difficult for the, a little bit more difficult for the people that are flying. We understand that everything is getting more expensive, so thank you.
And just for clarification, Acela is a computer program that helps permit processing. So it affects those who are doing permits and it combines a lot of the departments together to make it quicker, more efficient. Supervisor Long, comment?
So it does have an upfront, an upfront cost, but over the long term, there will be significant cost savings-
Right. The hours and savings for the applicants and everything else should be much more efficient.
And to the direction that, with the motion that's being put forward is certainly expressing that the board has an interest in trying to lend support to the, those three areas. They're not big-ticket items, but they too have great human interest and toll and importance. I fully believe with the public defender who never gets grants, unfortunately, but if-
He's more than 25 years.
If you should find-
That's it.
But I think, I think as important, if there's a way through our wonderful cadre of social workers who already have a lot on their shoulders, but to understand the importance of that social worker to your operational side of the house, we can find some, some way to make that work. And I talked to Monica before meeting tonight to say, I've got a wonderful new volunteer for her. I'm certain that she can lend some talents and treasures, so-
Animal Reg?
Yeah, Animal Reg, so animal control.
And services, animal services?
Animal services. But at the end of the day, at the end of this meeting, the bottom line is a very, very tight bottom line and excellent work by our managers, knowing this was coming and looking ahead, knowing next year could be even more tight in the sense of, you know, not, not, we don't have a new revenue source or we don't, sales tax has been so flat, that's impacting, you know, what we're seeing in law enforcement and the need that's there. So appreciate the good work of all the managers, the CEO, in holding the, a tight line here. And we'll move forward and just hope that at some point up in Sacramento, common sense will come into the discussions and, yeah, I am optimistic. And they'll do what they're elected to do to get a budget resolved at the state level. So thank you for the work.
Hopefully in a humane way.
And just one quick last thing on the airports. And Mr. Timms, I appreciate you're certainly serving in your advocacy to bring these comments forward. And as was noted, we worked through this and had a few public meetings. There'll be another one tomorrow. What the board's adoption tonight is to adopt that compromise, but knowing if there's further discussion tomorrow, there may be further compromise. But down the road, we're going to have, I believe, a better process in place, not just the process, but also commitment that you, that no one who enjoys the benefit of the airport, whether it be recreational or otherwise, sees huge jumps in fees, that we have a application that's going to be a fix to a CPI and, well, you've heard it also. I think we'll just continue to work through that. It's, you're feeling the same thing everyone's feeling when it comes to keeping their automobile running and putting gas in it and making sure it operates. But in the case of the everyday automobile, it's probably even more so a critical issue than for the recreational flyer. Not, less important, but more so.
Well, thank you for your time on that. And I'll be here tomorrow evening. We'll be talking about rent fees.
Yes, thank you.
And we now have the motion and Supervisor Zaragoza?
Yes. And I also, I wanted to thank our management team, you know, for, in fact, I was reading the budget guiding principles that, that we were working with, living within our means and openness for the community. Those words I think are extremely important. Delivering county services efficiently and effectively. Again, we need to reiterate that again. And then the fiscal discipline, the long-term adjustments to revenues and reductions and those principles I think are important. And our management, the strategic work for it. I know I mentioned that this afternoon, but I think it's important that we, that we look at that and the, and the reduction in the internal service funds that helped us balance the budget. And also the increased retirement contribution by the employees that helped us, you know, with about $14 million. Needs to be, and managing the economic downturn by receiving less revenues and increasing demand for services. I think all that is important and avoiding any substantial layoffs and any furloughs and so forth. So I need to commend our staff and you for an excellent budget. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I could, just to, just to clarify, I appreciate the comments, the other supervisors certainly support them. I just want to clarify, we're doing something a little bit, we're pushing the envelope here in terms of, I shouldn't say pushing the envelope, but trying to have two significant parts of HSA's program go forward. We're not specifically funding, we're asking the CEO's office and HSA to work those things out. And those are the eight positions. And I just want to make sure that our motion is, because we did this some time ago, but these are the eight positions that HSA asked for when they came forward with their budget, that children's position. But this rapid response program, now that we're adding to that, that is, I see that as likely a likely program for us to fund with tobacco funding in the future because I think it does actually fit under the category of health because you're really protecting the health of those seniors. And so that may be an area. So if we can hold it together for a year, I think that there's, it's an invitation, try to hold it together and then have us take a look at our own funding, independent of state funding with that. But I want to be, so I wanted to offer that and clarify that was certainly the intent of, the intent of the motion there.
And that trio of assistance to keep or help prevent people from getting into that adult protective need for adult protective services, what was outstanding, I think, about the presentation and the work that they're doing is, instead of referring, they're actually fixing, you know? And to me, that is just what we want in government. And you're doing it through some multidisciplinary teams that are truly effective. And we're seeing that in so many of our different departments, from Sheriff's Department to probation department and on and on, and looking at it now, the public defender's office, where you can get those teams together, you can be so much more effective. So it's great to see those silos breaking down and the support for these programs that in the long run are better for the individuals who are in need and then also better in terms of efficient use of tax dollars, keeping people out of custody. Yes?
Chair, just to clarify, on the eight positions in child protective services, those are already in the budget.
already in the budget, so, just want to make sure that was clear.
Thank you.
We just need Mr. Goodwin to come in a little higher there.
Sorry. My attorney was counsel.
Thank you.
As, as we get ready to vote on this, I just do, this is the first budget here for Mr. Powers. I do want to compliment him and all of the department heads for, for making it a smooth transition in terms of this budget, and some, some real challenging decisions. I think this is a budget that we're really proud of, and we appreciate it a great deal. Thank you very much.
And it, it also really shows our board's priority. We're seeing that piece of the pie in the public safety realm going up to 58 percent, really showing what our priorities are, but also looking at ways to save money, and, and in the future, too, we're seeing some potential cost savings, for example, in inmate medical costs. You know, there's a lot of things out there that we need to keep going after and keep paring down wherever we can, so. We do have a motion and a second, and this is on the general fund. We don't need any straw vote. We have the main motion. If we could all please vote. And that passes unanimously. And now, the second part is the non-general funds, a four-fifths vote required, particularly in the Airport Authority funding. Yes?
No.
Oh, okay. I see.
Moves the recommended budget.
We have a motion on the non-
Madam Chair, just for, rather than have a motion for general fund and non-general fund, I think the layout is the past, the, have motions for the resolutions for the different entities and the GAN, GAN Amendment resolution.
Can we just do them all at once?
Yeah, you can do them all at once.
Okay, and I guess where I was, was kind of in the straw vote kind of thing, but-
Okay.
That, that's okay. I, I think we're, we're prepared to go forward with that, yes. So, this would be adopting the fiscal year 2011, '12 budget resolutions, and there are five of them, and I can tell you what they are. They are to move approval, the resolution adopting the Ventura County General Fund and other funds budgets for fiscal year 2011, '12, as well as the resolution for the Fire Protection District, Watershed Protection District, Water Works Districts, and the Redevelopment Agency, all of those for the 2011, '12 budget, and that's five separate resolutions, so.
Can we add, there's a sixth resolution, it's not numbered on the sheet, but for the GAN limitation?
And including the sixth resolution regarding the GAN resolution.
That's what we meant to say, right Supervisor Zaragoza?
So, we do have a, a motion on this, and a second.
Mr. Zaragoza?
And now we can vote. And then that also passes unanimously, and we have completed our budget, so congratulations to staff particularly for the good work in helping us-
Pretty anticlimactic, wasn't it?
And I'm going to turn the mic over to Mr. Powers now.
Just to, just to- Well, I was just going to suggest a round of applause for all of you. One more time, but, no, thank you. All right, there we go.
And what about that Board of Supervisors?
Hey! Thank you. There we go. Yeah, that's right. Shameless pandering, it is good. But, but just to thank this team here and this board for the support. It was no accident that we got to this place, it's because of you and this board, so, thank you.
And also to the Auditor Controller for her good work on the budget, too. So, we stand adjourned.